Call this emergency meeting to order. I just have one chair announcement that again, due to the Mardi Gras holiday, the council meetings for February and March have been scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month instead of the first and third Tuesdays. Meetings will return to their typical schedule in April. This is an emergency ordinance to consider a mask mandate. I don't have any chair announcements. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Cindy, will you please read?
City ordinance 262021, an emergency ordinance of the Lafayette City Council mandating masks or facial coverings in certain establishments and public places, requiring businesses and organizations to require all employees, customers, and visitors to wear a mask or other face covering in certain circumstances, and establishing penalties therefore.
Legal, I'm going to ask you to explain the need for this emergency meeting, and your mic is hot. Well, it should be hot. Is it?
I got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Essentially, it comes from the Charter. The council is empowered to adopt emergency ordinances that deal with the public health and safety.
All right, thank you. Beautifully said. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second, please, to introduce. Motion by Councilman Lewis. Councilman Lazard. Would you like to make a motion or second? Would you like to second this ordinance? All right, I have a second. Council discussion, not seeing any yet. I'm going to allow Councilman Glenn Lazard to have the floor since this is his ordinance.
Dr. Ernest Kinschen.
And as he comes up and as the staff kind of transitioned out, we allowed the staff that doesn't usually stay for council meetings to leave. I just want to thank the staff for the last week and a half of calls in excess that they actually entered in excess of 3,000 calls in a week and a half. They were able to do nothing but answer calls, so, but they did it very professionally with a smile on their face, and they still were able to handle critical matters that did have to be handled. So I commend the staff and I thank them for their work.
Yes. That's correct. And speaking for my fellow council members, I think we all agree and can reiterate that, so thank them for us too. And the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Dr. Ernest W. Kinschen, Attorney Lazard, Mr. Mayor President, and members of the city council, and my brothers and sisters. Good evening. I am overjoyed that we are here for a common good that is clearly specified in the emergency ordinance for the use of masks before us today, to protect the life, health, property, and public safety of all of our citizens and all those who choose to visit our great city. It should be very easy for us to find harmony in the aforementioned goal in that it is not a black nor white, a red nor blue, a conservative nor liberal, but rather a life or death issue that is caused by the killer virus COVID-19, death that threatens the lives of every one of us, death that should cause all of us to fear because of the astounding statistics that we could be the next victim. 177 millions cases worldwide, nearly two and a half million deaths, 27 million people in our own country afflicted by this virus, nearly 500,000 deaths of all of our citizens and loved ones. We should have no fear, no hesitation in terms of how we can deal with this virus. As physicians, our commitment is to provide the best possible care and information that will give our community the opportunity to live a life that is worth living. Therefore, we have been advocates in our efforts to protect you from this deadly virus, to encourage the wearing of masks, a practice that is uniformly utilized throughout the world, social distancing, in addition to social distancing, good hand washing, and certainly vaccinations. The serious health problems that I suffered with asthma and allergies in my lifetime and growing up proved to be a blessing and the reason that I became a doctor, so that I could prevent others from suffering as I had. However, to help you to understand just how much respect and fear that I have for COVID-19, I have a confession to make. As aggressively as I have advocated the benefits when there are no contraindications of vaccines, influenza, pneumonia, shingles, et cetera, my confession is that because of the consideration that we must always make as it relates to risks versus benefits, in my adult life, I have never had a vaccination. But when it came to COVID-19, because of such a non-compromising virus, I was vaccinated as earliest, as the very earliest possible time. The message is that we have no choice if we are going to crush this deadly virus, but to do everything in our power to reach that outcome. If we want victory as in any war, we must employ, use every weapon available in our efforts to prevail over this great enemy, COVID-19. Other than the vaccine, the most effective proven measure that we have and that can take and crush this deadly virus is the wearing of masks. Therefore, all of us must do all that we can to wear this deadly virus out. We must resist any effort by anyone who tries to fool us into believing that someone is trying to take away any of our rights. The only way that we can do whatever we can, any of you could do whatever you want to, have what you want, when you want, how you want, would be if you were an island. But no man is an island. We are all closely interwoven. We breathe the same air. We are all part of a community that should be made more pure, that should be made immaculate by love. We must live the commandment, "Love ye one another as I have loved you. Love your neighbor as yourself." It is incontrovertible that this deadly COVID-19 virus is spread by respiratory droplets. Therefore, the mask. Let me remind you that Texas Representative Ron Wright just died of this virus. Let me remind you that Representative Luke Ledlow just died of this virus. Let me inform you that just yesterday, I got a call to help a 32-year-old who was recently paralyzed by this virus. Let us face it, we have laws that demand seat belts, that demand head helmets, and we have red lights for our safety. Let us be wise enough to employ the use of face masks by taking up this ordinance and approving it, that will help to save all of our lives. As a community, as a loving community, we should do no less. The message of this ordinance will, the passage of this ordinance will make for a healthier, happier, and more prosperous future for all of us, and an action that we can all be proud of. May God bless all of the attendees tonight, and may the members of this council be open to God's will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm not seeing any other council discussion.
Do you have any more?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
How many speakers do we have?
We have 14 who signed in timely. I just received three more, and they didn't present their courts timely, but we have 14.
Okay. Madam Chair, what I think we'll do is just go ahead and go through the speakers, and then it's okay with you, and then we can do council comments.
Perfect. That works. That works.
Just go through the speakers.
Okay.
All right. We did have two citizens who signed in who did not wish to speak in support of the ordinance. 27 citizens who did not wish to speak signed in in opposition to the ordinance. As far as call-ins and emails to the council office, the council office received a total of 3,059 total calls in reference to the mask mandate, of which 2,060 were in opposition, 999 were in favor. Of the 14 speakers remaining, the first of which is Marjorie Broussard, and she will be followed by Keith Falk. If you both could come forward.
And as Veronica is saying your names, we're going to be using both of these, so please be on standby for this one. That way, we can keep the meeting moving as quickly as possible. So whoever was next, please come to this podium. Thank you so much. Hold on, let me put your mic on. I'm sorry, Marjorie. There you go, babe.
Marjorie Broussard, Louisiana State NAACP Vice President, District D. I couldn't have said it any better than Dr. Kinschen, so I definitely want to just echo what he said 110%. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Keith Falk, followed by Lucy Hinky.
Keith Falk, a concerned community activist, also an entertainment independent contractor. In respects to what Dr. Kinschen has said, if y'all feel it's not right for government to require people to wear masks in public places or when they're out in public, well, put it on the backs of the 2,007 independent contractors in the entertainment business who have to follow guidelines or face what a fine, or maybe they even shut down their operations because they didn't follow that guideline. So for y'all to say government, it's not right for government to require people to wear masks, to enforce a mask mandate, well, it's not right for government to enforce any of the COVID-19 restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next two speakers.
Is Lucy Hinky here? Okay. Jared Eubanks, followed by is Meg Moran here? Okay, good.
And the next two speakers, so we know who's after that.
After Meg Moran is Dr. Brittany A. Bear.
Thank you.
Hi, I come here tonight, Jared Eubanks, sorry about that, District 2. I come here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of this. I'm not a doctor, and you've heard enough from doctors that this is the prudent course of action. This is the course of action that would help. That's not what is up for debate here tonight. What's up for debate here, I guess, two arguments that I could like foreseeably see against this. One is this idea that it's a personal responsibility, and that's really lovely for someone like myself, and I assume many of you. I work in an office. I don't work with the public most of the time. When I choose to go out in public, I have the luxury of wearing a mask, and I can limit that. A lot of people don't have that luxury. They work in retail and service industries, and they have no choice on, if they want to keep their job, on whether or not they're going to deal with people not wearing masks. That's where personal responsibility ends and the role of government comes into play. Their safety is being put in jeopardy because we're not willing to act. That is reprehensible to me. Additionally, people working these jobs usually do not live alone, often in multi-generational households. So even if they're young and fairly healthy, they go home to people that might be at risk. And they're having to put their family members at risk because we don't want to require people to take the barest amount, I only had a minute 30, so, barest amount of time and inconvenience to respect the safety of other people around them. Second, the idea that we won't pass this because the administration won't enforce it, that's ludicrous to me. That's ceding any control this council has over governing this city to the administration. If that's the choice, why pass anything? We'll just give the administration carte blanche to do what it wants to do. Lastly, I just implore you guys, you see what works. We're lucky that numbers are going back down, but then you see the chaos in New Orleans right now, and you know that's what fueled Louisiana's early uptick last year, so we know that another round of this is coming. Please, let's take some proactive action for once. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. A. Bear, I think the lady was actually right before you.
Well, no, but she touched it already before we can, yeah, so we'll let Dr. Brittany, you could go in ahead and start your comments.
Sure.
Excuse me. Also, I request that Dr. A. Bear be given the courtesy of having extra time if she needs it. I didn't know she was here when I called up Dr. Kinschen.
We can't, no, I can't start doing extra three minutes, extra time for people.
We've done it before, Madam Chair.
Nope.
We've done it before.
No.
Yes, we have.
For council members.
We've done it before.
Councilman Lazard.
Madam Chair, if I may.
No. I'm saying no as chairman, no.
We've done it before. When council members have called up people to testify, we've done it before.
But I'm telling you, no as chairman. Let's move forward. We need to be fair, three minutes for everyone.
You're talking about being fair.
I've already given you one, the gentleman who began, I let him kick it off, and he had more than three minutes.
So there's a limit to the number of?
No.
No.
Not as a council.
Saying no. Thank you.
My point is?
I hear you, but I said no. Let's move forward.
So we're not going to apply the same set of rules to everybody?
No, of course not.
What are you talking about? If we start giving this person, then this person, then this person, then this person, no, we need to be consistent. Everyone gets three minutes.
So we're going to start being consistent tonight?
The floor is yours.
I'm Dr. Brittany A. Bear. I was born and raised here in Lafayette. I also graduated with honors from Yale University. I was Honor Society in Medical School at LSU, Chief Resident in Internal Medicine Residency, geriatric trained, and previous Assistant Professor in Internal Medicine. I now call Lafayette my home. I know you are tired right now. I am tired too. But my tired does not come from this meeting or social distancing. It did not come when I volunteered to serve on the front lines in New York during a surge that decimated a city. It did not come whenever I served our patients in our city of Lafayette during the next two surges that crumpled our own city. It didn't come last month whenever I guided my patients when we were unable to find them ER beds or hospital beds, when many of them suffered hypoxic and at least one died unnecessarily. That's not where the tiredness come from. It comes from my coworkers and me, working tirelessly, trying to improve ourselves constantly, to try to stay up to date with the advancing science that's changing every day, to try to improve, to teach, to help, to save every life that we can, and to have others not do their very small part in this. My tiredness comes when people that are capable of doing their little part decide to be comfortable with making things worse, when others of us try so hard to save every life and every livelihood that we can. There are facts about this current world that will not bend. There are truths for now that will not change. From here on, we will be judged in hindsight by how well we adapt right now to the following. If COVID is unchecked, it will crumple our city over and over again. Humanity will always push against social distancing, but masks work and mandates do help. I delivered a link to 78 articles supporting the science behind what I just stated to the council last week. I hope you are able to review it. It supports everything I just stated. Anyone who tells you otherwise is severely behind on their reading, and they are misleading you at the detriment to human lives in your city. Yes, our cases are on the decline right now, but we have all seen this pattern before. We surge, we tighten up and do the right thing, cases decline, we relax, and it happens all over again and more people die. Everyone is already relaxing again, and we have two variants that now spread faster and another variant that infects quicker. Brazil thought they had herd immunity, they opened back up, they are being crushed by another surge that no one expected. When will we start learning from the people around us? How many surges will we fail to prevent, and how many lives will be lost unnecessarily? I am Dr. Brittany A. Bear. I'm telling you that a local mask ordinance will save lives, and if you are strong enough to vote for it, you will save lives. Thank you.
Meg Moran, followed by Jody Bordalon. Is Jody Bordalon here?
Right.
Okay, and Jody will be followed by Wallace Senegal.
My name is Meg Moran. I'm a resident of District 4. I wanted to speak here tonight about the purpose of government. But first, I would like to address the good doctors that spoke before. I understand where they're coming from. I understand that they firmly believe in their heart that what they're telling you is true. However, there are many other doctors around this nation that disagree with the statements they just gave, America's frontline doctors. There's also, which is a large group of doctors who have come forward to say that masks do not work, and there's also, if y'all are unaware, a group of European doctors in The Hague that are filing a lawsuit against these large organizations which are informing these doctors that masks work, and they are filing a lawsuit against a crime against humanity for the disinformation that is being perpetrated throughout the world. So I just wanted to address the purpose of government. The purpose of government is not to make sure that you're eating your vegetables. It's not to redistribute your wealth. It is not to protect your health. The purpose of government is to protect your liberty so you can protect your health. As civil servants, we expect...
You can keep going, keep going.
As civil servants, we expect you to act as our trustees, not as our masters. The Constitution is a limited contract. It delegates limited power to public servants. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 states that you cannot discriminate me for my beliefs. If I believe a mask is harmful, law requires you to respect this. We cannot be deprived of our natural rights. The right to breathe is a natural right. Forcing a mask is an assault. I would like to take this opportunity to also speak to our mayor. It's about something that's going to take a lot of courage, but I know that courage is not something that you are short of. I would like you to consider refusing to even continue enforcing the unlawful mask mandate that has been forced upon us by our governor. Wearing a mask should be a choice, not a mandate. Please, Mr. Mayor, stand up for freedom.
Thank you, time. Time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, the people, are counting on you.
Hey.
Okay, we had Jody.
Two times is up, but thank you.
I paused for the woman.
And that's right, I gave you a couple more seconds.
Jody Bordalon, followed, oh, I'm sorry. Jody Bordalon, followed by Wallace Senegal.
I don't think Jody's here.
Wallace Senegal, followed by Alicia Roberts.
I can't say it no better than Dr. Kinschen said it, and he's a doctor. It seemed like when the mask mandate started with Councilman Glenn Lazard, we had another council on board. It's not about a vote to stay in office or to get in office. It's about people helping.
Yeah, more, he's at the bottom, but I could call on...
I'm in my 70s. I might have health issues. I don't want nobody else's problem. You could ride downtown on a weekend, and I guarantee you, everybody is partying downtown with no mask. We could always wear masks and open up our Mardi Gras, our festival international, but if we're not going to do anything about wearing a mask to say, ah, keep this virus from spreading, shame on us. Seat belts, like Dr. said, all these things was mandated, you know? Why we can't have a mandate on wearing a mask? You guys are wearing masks tonight. You know, y'all in the government building, I wear my mask. I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, you know? Very few people had masks on. Now, can you, this day, you wore your mask? The people in the audience didn't have no mask. I don't have to, I didn't have to be there, but I had my mask on. As soon as I got out that building, I took that mask off and got rid of it because I didn't know what I was breathing in that building. I threw it away. I didn't try to hold it to wear it down the street or nothing like this here, you know? So you guys got to understand, it's not about a vote if you're going to stay in your seat because your constituents don't want you to wear a mask, you know? It's about the safety of the public. Public people need to wear masks. If you're not going to pass this ordinance for us to wear masks, take y'all off right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Alicia Roberts, followed by Daniel Moore.
Daniel Moore, are you in the building?
Yeah, he will wait.
Oh, okay, sorry. Didn't see you.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Alicia Roberts. First, I'd like to say, I know that just about everybody on this board calls themselves a Christian, and for whatever reason, in the local politics, decided to put out there that you are all pro-life. If you are going to say that you're pro-life, then that means you're pro all of the lives, including people who need to be protected from other people by you wearing masks. Never again should you say that you're pro-life if you vote against this tonight, because that just means you're pandering, which, let's all agree that that's probably what was going on anyway. While I realize this ordinance is not likely to pass, I cannot stand idly by and not speak out on the topic. I'm one of the co-founders of the Lafayette Parish COVID-19 Memorial Committee, and when we plant those flags at each site, it has drilled into our heads the level of loss our community is experiencing. When I see images like the ones from around Lafayette's downtown on the weekends, or around shopping centers, or large gatherings of people, such as private Mardi Gras balls in people's houses, I'm disgusted with the ever-rising death rate here in our city. I'm disgusted, I'm disappointed, and I'm galvanized. I'm galvanized to work tirelessly towards actual enforcement of the existing state mandate, which we wouldn't even need this conversation for a city mandate if we would agree to enforce the state mandate. I'm also galvanized by the folks I know who are doing the right things. I should never hear a single word from Mr. Guillory, Ms. Cook, Ms. A. Bear, Mr. Nakant about the hospitality of this city, or the good people who care about their neighbors, when you can't be bothered to enforce the state mandate that we already have in order to protect that community that you so lovingly refer to. And you have actively worked to kill this ordinance by being against it publicly and privately, by going so far as to bully the other members on this board by inciting your cronies to make phone calls to them and your colleagues, and harassing them as physicians outside the scope of their expertise and with false information. I'll never understand any of y'all's desire to make a public health crisis into your personal political war. If you have ever watched a zombie movie, or any kind of apocalyptic movie, and wondered, how did it go from everybody partying one day to five people left on the planet the next day? What we are seeing now is the in-between that doesn't get played in those movies. We are seeing the mishandling of this situation, and that is something they don't ever show because I guess they don't figure people are going to be that ignorant. I also have pages and pages of research that I pulled up today too, but... I also have pages and pages of research that I pulled up today too, but doctors that are way more experienced and knowledgeable than myself on data have already sent you that. I would like to say that there is a mandate in this building, and yet your own private hired security can't be bothered to wear their mask correctly. So I just don't understand why this is even where it is. I know someone who died yesterday, leaving a young widow, four kids, two grandkids, his sibling, and a ton of extended family. And if masking and social distancing works, which it does, I don't understand why we're even arguing this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker Daniel Moore, and he will be followed by Noah Delat.
If I fall, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. My name is Daniel Moore. Ms. Lynette is my representative. I tried to call you earlier today. I was actually kicked out of the building earlier today because of this policy. I can't wear a mask, okay? That's probably the reason why I fell on my can back there, because I've got a lung issue, part of it, besides the fact that I'm all busted up for other reasons. We're talking about Hollywood and stuff like that, our governor. During the COVID time of last year, guess what? 28 movies were filmed in New Orleans alone, 28. So where's his COVID thing going at that point when he was making money? So, and we've got majority, we've got 20060 opposing it. We've got 999 to four, fine. But what about somebody like myself that can't? Okay, I can't wear a mask, and I'm going to be fined every time I go into a business. You've got a mask on, and I'm not sure who's for it, who's against it. That's up to you. I'm not chastising you because if you want to wear a mask, that's fine. But you've got a mask on. You're protected, all right? I can't wear a mask because when I wear a mask, I have trouble breathing, I pass out. I can own your business, though. Not to be rude or jerk about it, but if the issue gets pushed, ADA rules, I've got a service animal here as part of it. If I fall down and get busted up in someone's building because of something being pushed, I can own that property, that business. Would I do it? No, because it's your business. What it comes down to is, I can't wear, and I'm going to be penalized. What is the fine going to be? Has anybody said what it's going to be? I'm asking the mayor. Anybody, please? What's the fine going to be? Does anybody know?
Let's let you, he can answer that at the end, but keep going because you're on your time.
Sure, that's what I'm saying.
Go ahead.
This is my, I think I'm done with it. Right there, I just, I've got my point, like I said, I made my point. The governor has made 28 movies in New Orleans during COVID. We've got people, the majority are opposing it, and we've got, let's see, what's my other point? Oh, and we're talking about people, the governors and stuff like that. How about our governor in New York? 50% he's been hiding what's been actually going on there. He's the one that put the people in the nursing homes. Not us, not me, he did, and he did. And now he's under investigation. I don't know what to go from that point, but I'm opposed it, and that's just on my behalf because of health reasons. I'd like to know what the fine's going to be because I said I can't wear it, and what about all those that can't? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Noah Delat followed by Gail George. Gail George, are you here? Gail, okay.
I am not a medical expert. I do not claim to be a medical expert. I am a rational human being, though, and I claim to be one. I would like to start out first by saying that I'm very happy to live in Lafayette, in Lafayette area. I saw him receive a little too much flak tonight. I do want to commend our mayor president, Josh Gillery. I think he's done a pretty bang-up job for most of his administration. Doesn't mean I agree with everything, but, you know, maybe you don't hear it enough. Anyway, the things that I want to say about this mask mandate are a few. Again, I'm not going to rattle off statistics because, again, I'm not a medical expert and don't claim to be one. While there might be many cases, in many case studies that show, you know, the minimal effect that cloth masks do to prevent the spread of coronavirus, not saying they do nothing, obviously, they're going to do something like throwing chain, sand out of chain-linked fence, it's going to do something. But there's very little evidence that I've been able to find that the masks generally used by the public, cloth masks, NetGator's cotton, polyester masks, all these things are really all that effective at all. These are not N95 masks, these are not N99 masks. Again, I've not found a whole lot to say that shows that they are effective. Even if they are, and we think that masks are the magic bullet, I still do not understand a policy that requires you to wear one walking into a restaurant for 10 seconds while you get seated at your table, immediately take it off, and then not have to wear it for most of your visit. If we really think this is a life-and-death situation and we need to be constantly six feet apart away from each other, washing our hands, I don't understand why we don't have then, by that same logic, a hand-washing mandate or a six-feet-apart mandate or any of these other absurd notions that would infringe upon people's freedom and their choice to live life as they see fit. More importantly, based on my reading of the legislation, it puts an unnecessary burden on business owners to enforce this mandate, not on the government who is imposing the fines on those businesses, and that is evil. That is anti-small business. These businesses have been hurt enough throughout this pandemic, and they have been given little to no help. PPP payments have not been enough. Big businesses get bailouts, small businesses get nothing, and that has been the story for this past year. Do not put the burden on these business owners to enforce an unconstitutional and, quite frankly, an anti-natural law, anti-human right mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gail George followed by Marja Brusart, and then we will have the final speaker, Jason Collins.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gail George, District Two, and I'm the widow of Peter David Garrisco. I'd like to share my thoughts tonight to help you understand why I believe that the wearing of mask is not just what the medical community recommends, it's also how we can show our love for and protect each other. Before I share my love story, I ask you to think a moment about other government mandates, the seat belt law, no smoking ordinances, and kindergarten. I'm sure each one of these new initiatives received great pushback to the government overreaching and to our personal freedoms. Yet history has shown the efficacy of these measures to protect and better our quality of life. People now embrace these new laws. I believe that mask-wearing also protects and saves lives. David and I enjoyed a charmed, magical seven years together. At age 58, I'd finally found my soulmate. We laughed all the time, we learned together, we played, we traveled, we valued so many of the same things, the arts, music, and dancing. We loved and adored our blended family of five kids, seven grandkids. There was no greater pleasure for us when we were hanging with the fam. David was diagnosed with COVID on December 16th, a mild case for the first eight days. On Christmas Eve, his oxygen level began to drop slightly, and we watched that very carefully. On Christmas Day, I heard David coughing uncontrollably. I rushed to him with the oximeter. The reading was 78. So we sped off to Lafayette General, and in 10 minutes, they had taken him back to the emergency department. For two weeks, he stayed on the fifth floor of the COVID unit. I got calls every morning at 6:00. I got a call at 6:00 PM by the day nurse. All of the nurses loved him. They said that he kept him entertained. For the first week, it seemed his oxygen levels were improving, but the second week, his progress stalled. His oxygen levels wouldn't stay in the 90s without the help of those machines. On day 14, he was deemed a non-COVID patient out of isolation, and I was allowed to visit anytime as much as I wanted. When I walked in that first time, we both cried. During the next six days, his chest would heave with quick staccato breaths. We would hold hands for a long time, staring into each other's eyes, me trying to calm him telepathically, I guess, and inhaling and exhaling slowly for him to follow. Tears streamed down his face. I could see his terror, but I wouldn't cry. I didn't want him to see that. I had to keep cheering, you've got this baby, you can do it. On January 13th, I left for the night at 11:00 PM crying because I knew just how sick he was. I got a call at 5:00 AM saying he'd been taken to ICU. I didn't see him conscious again because he was put on a ventilator. Ladies and gentlemen, not being able to say a final goodbye is a special torture in and of itself. Watching the numbers on the machines in ICU drop over the course of two and a half hours to all zeros is a unique form of hell that no one should have to endure. In closing, think about these government mandates that I've mentioned as I began, measures that were no doubt resisted by many but now valued for their contributions. Would you vote tonight against no smoking ordinances, seat belt laws, kindergarten for five-year-olds? As of today's report, there have been more than 225 families in Lafayette Parish who have lost a husband or wife, brother, sister, grandparent. I implore that tonight you vote to mandate the wearing of mask and stop this loss of life. Without this ordinance, more people will die, perhaps your constituent, perhaps your loved one. I say again, no one should have to endure this nightmare of death by COVID. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your voting yes to this mask mandate.
Next speaker is Marja Brusart, followed by Jason Collins.
Marja, weren't you the first, she was the first speaker.
Oh, she was the first, okay, they had it twice.
So nice, we said it twice.
And, Madam Chair, I have two people who inadvertently signed in for the next item, and it's just two people. If we could, okay, thank you. Tara Fogelman? And Elijah Odenet.
As of today, Lafayette Parish has lost 241 people in our community. Statewide, 9,142. Happy birthday, Liz. These people will never have a birthday. I support the mask mandate ordinance. Until you have seen your child on a ventilator due to some type of lung failure because of a virus, fighting for their life, I guess most wouldn't understand my plea to the council. It's absolutely hell to watch your child in a medical-induced coma, fighting for their life, so fragile you can't touch them, and you can only speak in a whisper so you don't overstimulate them. That was just a flu from my 24-year-old daughter. Thank God she survived. There are people who believe that wearing a mask won't help to stop the spread of COVID. Let's just say that they're right. So we suffer a small, uncomfortable inconvenience. But what if they're wrong, perhaps thinking it's just a slight cold, a sinus infection, but then exposes someone with a compromised immune system? Killing them, someone's someone is gone. So for myself and my family and my community, I'd rather be slightly uncomfortable and inconvenienced to save a life. Ms. Cook, you helped to start this ordinance, then you backed out. You allowed yourself to be bullied by Trump cultists and QAnon radicals with their conspiracy theories. But you're a teacher at a Catholic school that's pro-life. Can you please be pro-life for Ella Conrad? And if you don't know who she is, ask Josh Gillery because he held her several times and he took pictures of her, or together. She has a compromised immune system. Her life does matter. Can you please be pro-life for our communities that you represent? Can we please follow and enforce the mandate of our governor and help to save lives in Lafayette Parish and throughout the state of Louisiana? Can we just please do that? This is not about politics. It truly isn't about freedoms. It's not even about how it's going to cost the taxpayer extra money for people to enforce it. It's simply about love, compassion, respect, and saving people's lives in our communities.
Thank you, Tara.
Please.
Time up.
Save our lives.
Next speaker.
Final speaker, Elijah Odenet.
Hello. My name is Eli Odenet. I've lived in Lafayette for the past 19 years and cherish the opportunities Lafayette has given me. It is undeniable that social life in the city has been on a tremendous decline since the beginning of COVID. This mandate-forcing legislation on the personal health care is ridiculous. If you are medically compromised, overweight, or you smoke, you will be more prone to suffering from the cold. If that is the case, then you can wear a mask yourself. Why should healthy people be punished for ensuring that they stay in shape and have a highly tolerant immune system? Admittedly, in the beginning of this cold, everyone was frightened for their lives, but I believe we have reached a point where the mask orders, social distancing, and lockdowns have done more harm than the virus. Social emotional agnesia is the inability to perceive facial expressions, body language, and voice intonation. By wearing masks in social situations, people are no longer able to see facial expressions and return causing a depleted social skills. Therefore, this disorder is a common trait in our society. On top of this, small businesses have suffered intolerable losses, forcing them to close their doors forever, some are hanging on by a thread, and you wish to go into their business and enforce a hogwash mandate that contradicts Louisiana state law, which has been in writing and enforced for a significantly longer period of time. Louisiana Revised Statute 14313 clearly states that wearing masks or hoods in public is prohibited and should have penalty. To enforce the mandate today would contradict years of judge rulings and penalties assigned to those who broke this law. If, in fact, you allowed the mandate, it would only be right to expunge the records of every individual that ever received a written citation or was charged with a misdemeanor for wearing this mask. This mandate is simply forcing Governor John Bell's order on the city of Lafayette. His executive order was signed March 11th of 2020 and has been renewed post-expiration 16 times. If the council was to agree on this mandate, Lafayette City would be forced to adhere to the tyrannical overreach the government has signed into law until he exonerates his state-of-emergency COVID orders. We do not know how long this would last. So why should we trust politicians to tell us to wear a mask and that it will be over soon when they've been saying this for over a year? If we are to take our rights for granted and give up a piece of freedom for a minute amount of safety, then we deserve neither freedom nor safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
No, ma'am. All right. Public comment, I know some council members had some, I don't see any speakers from the council, anybody have anything they want to add? Or are we going to a vote? Councilman Lazar, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we started this process, we knew there would be some differences of opinion, say the least. And for the most part, it's been civil in nature. But some of the comments that have been made, some of the calls that we have received, it's far from that. That's okay, everybody's entitled to their opinion. I'm not going to address medical issues. We have professionals here tonight that have already addressed that. And I guess whenever you're in a situation like this and you, once you establish a position on an issue, you can always find some kind of justification for the position you've taken. you can always find some kind of justification for the position you've taken. It's kind of like when the police arrest somebody and then try to build a case after the arrest as opposed to it being the other way around, which is the way it's supposed to be. And so a lot of times, and we see all these studies, and we know there are about hundreds of them out there, literally. And if you search hard enough, I guess you could find a study that agrees with your position. And everybody's not an expert, people. Everybody's not an expert. From the standpoint of the medical part of it, there are people that are specially trained in this field, infectious disease. So if you're, and we've heard the different opinions from, you know, we've heard that this doctor said this, this doctor said that, this doctor said this. And I guess they're all entitled to their opinions. But what's the basis for the opinion is what's important. What kind of experience do they have in that respective area of medicine? Just something to think about. When we talk about where we're getting our information from. As far as Lafayette is concerned, I will take the advice of the chief medical officers from Lafayette General and Lourdes. And there are groups, if you will, because they have experts in all areas of medicine. I will take their advice on an issue such as this before I will a chiropractor. We actually had a chiropractor that came out in opposition to this. A chiropractor, talking about the inherent dangers of wearing a mask. And look, I'm not going to argue the fact that it's uncomfortable. It is. And I've been wearing them a lot longer than anybody else in this room. Okay, they're not very comfortable. Tara, as somebody that has a history of asthma, I can identify, not to the extent that you're referring to about your daughter, but struggling to catch my breath at times. And obviously, it's been aggravated after my leukemia diagnosis. So thank you for that. So do a mask work. Once again, I guess we, different studies, I guess, as to whether they do or not. But I'm going to go back to, this is a quote from Dr. Amanda Logue that was given in an interview, I think with KETC. She's the chief medical officer of Lafayette General. Following recommendations from the Center for Disease Control, Ashna Lafayette General advises all individuals ages two and older, wear a mask when in public spaces. Face masks and other social distancing measures play a vital role in slowing the spread of COVID-19 in our community. We continue to support mask mandates. Wearing a mask in public is a simple but powerful way to protect both yourself and those around you. That's one. Bear with me for just a second. This is from Dr. Henry Kaufman, chief medical officer at Lourdes. And this was in an interview with the Daily Advertiser. On February 2nd, I think, an interview with Mr. Capps, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Our Lady of Lourdes Chief Medical Officer, Henry Kaufman, and it references the fact that both myself and Ms. Cook had spoken to him. Cook and Lazard both have been in contact with over the proposal, referring to the ordinance, said Tuesday that although he would rather not need a mandate to require people to wear a mask, he personally supported the idea since similar requirements have proven to help slow the spread of COVID-19 in other areas. The preponderance of evidence supports that mask mandates work, Kaufman said. And if that helps to keep our communities safe and our businesses up and running and our economy vibrant, and it helps us get back to normal sooner rather than later, then I support it. And I would advocate that everybody else supported too. Lafayette is the largest, and this is just a follow-up to the story, Lafayette is the largest city in Louisiana to not have its own mask mandate. So like I said, it comes down to your source of information and what kind of experience and expertise those individuals have. Nobody's saying that any mask or protective measures you take are 100% effective. Nobody's saying that. But it's all about doing everything we possibly can to slow the spread of this deadly virus so that we can get back to some sense of normalcy, whatever that is. On a can of Lysol, it says kills 99.9% of germs and viruses. It doesn't say 100%, yet Lysol can't stay on the shelves. Why? It doesn't kill 100% of germs. Why is everybody flocking to buy it as soon as the truck pulls up? I think we all know the reason why. I would pose, and when we talk about the deaths, somebody said 225 as of today? What's the exact number, as of today? Because the number I have in my petition in my ordinance I prepared last Wednesday, I know we're averaging like three deaths today in Lafayette Parish. What's it for Lafayette Parish again, Tara? I'm sorry. And I think the last time I checked, we were averaging something like three deaths a day, if I'm not mistaken. So those are not just numbers. Those are human beings. Those are mothers and fathers, husbands and wives, brothers and sisters, grandmothers and grandfathers. We have to have some empathy. We have to. And those are just deaths directly attributed to COVID. That's not counting the ones that are indirectly caused by COVID. And what I mean by that is, I mean elderly patients that may be in a hospital for some other reason that die from depression and loneliness because they can't see their families because of COVID restrictions. That's not counting the ones at Heritage Manor, Cornerstone, Amelia Manor, Marquis de Lafayette, The Blake, or any other nursing homes or assisted living facilities. We're talking about elderly people that have gone months up on end without having access to family members because of COVID restrictions. So you have the direct, and then you have the indirect. So let's talk about businesses for just a second, okay? I don't know how many of you read the current, but Jeff Daly did an excellent story on yesterday about how this ordinance, instead of having a negative impact on businesses, will have a positive impact on businesses. It simply states that as soon as we get back to normal, businesses will be up and thriving again. But that's not going to happen as long as we keep trying to address this in a piecemeal fashion. As you all know, the city of New Orleans is basically closed this weekend. Very bold steps taken by the mayor. And they interviewed several business owners, and three of them specifically stated that even though they're going to lose money, they agree with the mayor's decision. They stated that they would rather be closed for four days than to be closed for four months. So it's not necessarily an impediment to businesses in the long run. And I'm going to close. To everybody that feels that masks don't work and serve no purpose, I submit this to you. If there were 19 people in a room all diagnosed with COVID, and this is to the people that are anti-mask, okay? There were 19 people in the room diagnosed with COVID. And you had to go in that room, and you had a choice of going in with or without a mask. Tell me that you would voluntarily choose to go in without the mask. To my fellow council members, think about the lives that have been lost. And I'm not saying that, because we don't know what the causes were of these individuals or how they contracted the virus. And we are certainly not saying that that if they had been wearing a mask, they wouldn't have contracted it. We don't know that. We don't know that. We don't. But there's absolutely no doubt that wearing a mask, along with the other protective measures that have been mentioned, slow the spread of this deadly virus. The other thing that's been brought up quite often is, why do we need this when we already have governor's mandate? Mayor President Gilery, has your position changed in terms of your position on the ordinance?
Thank you, Councilman, and I think you made some pretty good points, and I know where your heart is on this issue. Are you asking me my position on the ordinance or the position on the governor's mandate?
Both.
Okay.
Has it changed?
Well, as far as the state mandate goes, my position hasn't changed. That the state has communicated to me that the state will continue to enforce the state's mandate.
So there's still no intention of the city of Lafayette enforcing it? Or using the city of Lafayette resources to enforce it?
And that is correct, Councilman, but I will defer to the deliberation of this council to consider the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. So for everybody that's wondering why we need this when we have a governor's mandate, that's your answer right there. Thank you. I relinquish the floor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let me just share a few things, my thoughts, my observation. When the COVID first started back in the early part of 2020, people were reaching out to the council members. I know for sure myself. Why don't you guys pass a mask mandate? I mean, you heard it over and over again. Then right when we started to pursue this, then here comes people. Freedom of speech, freedom of speech. That's great. But I believe freedom of speech, you need honor. You need honor to have freedom of speech. Where's your conscience? Where is your conscience? People getting sick, the germs are being spread. We see a mask. Someone said earlier, I think Mr. Wallace and Garcia, we have a mask. A lot of people, I see when they come on the parking lot, driving their car, they have their mask on. They have their mask on, just like their seat belts. Just like a seat belt. Everybody leave tonight, I bet you the majority of the people have a seat belt on. It's mandated. About three years ago, us three council members right here, we passed an ordinance, no smoking in public places. We did that. It wasn't controversial, but we did it. Medical people, anyone go to the hospital or the doctor tomorrow, you better have your mask on. What the door says, mask required. I had surgery about, what, four months ago? Four months ago. I wanted my wife to come with me to the surgery, you know, while I was having surgery. They told me no. They told me she could not come because of the COVID-19 or the pandemic, whatever you want to call it, it's the same thing. She couldn't come. So what I did, I said, well, I'm going to another hospital. Then they let her come in. About a month after that, I went and checked on my bill. I couldn't get in unless I had a mask. Even though I had a mask, I had to stay outside. Same hospital, good friend of mine had a surgery as well, at the same place. His wife had to stay outside in the parking lot. Couldn't go and see him. So but you have some medical people coming in here, well, not here, but talking, writing, sending emails and texts. It doesn't help, don't help. But you go to their office tomorrow. Bet you got to have your mask on. My wife and my daughter are in the medical profession. They told me while they were in school, that's one thing they teach, have a mask on all the time and wash your hands. Now we have a pandemic that killing people. People getting sick because of the germs. It's not about, it's not about just you. It's about the people that you live with, the surrounding people, the people that you breathe on or you breathe their air, people that you cough, you sneeze on, or they do that to you. Before the pandemic came around, when people would sneeze on them, I didn't like that. I walked away. I didn't like people smoking on me. I walk away. And I have a excuse to walk away. But if I have my mask on, I feel I have a little bit more protection. But if I have my mask on, I feel I have a little bit more protection. I know it's a hard decision for council members to make. And the hardest thing for us is that we try. All five of, all five of council members here want to do the right thing. But what happens? We get emails, phone calls, texts, telling you it's my body, it's my charge. Yeah, it is your body and your charge. But what about the other people? They have a charge and they have a body. And they don't want the government involved. Nobody wants the government involved. But when they want the government involved, they want the government involved. It's always a two-sided thing. So don't, I mean, whichever way the council members vote, don't beat on them, don't hate them. We lack them to support it, but then that's their charge because they have, you know, constituency or they have a different opinion. But again, we all want to do the right thing. And to do the right thing, we have to deep down in our heart and our soul and see what is the best way to do something to make our constituent happy and our life happy. It's hard. All I'm asking you, fellow council members, to support this ordinance if you can. If you cannot, it's on you. Just remember, you have families, you have grandkids, you have a husband or a wife. I don't know, some people have underlying conditions. Some don't, but it doesn't matter. When it hits you, it hits you and you can't turn back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing any other council discussion. I'm going to call for a vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District two?
No.
District three?
No.
District four?
No.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
The motion to adopt fails.
Since the motion did not fail, the ordinance failed, we will not be voting on introductory ordinance, CO 027-2021. And so with that adjourned the emergency city council meeting. Thank you all for coming.